Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting for the City Council of the City of Calistoga. It is January 7th at 6:03 PM. The City Clerk, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Here.
Councilmember Kraus?
Here.
Mayor Canning?
Here, thank you very much. If you've not already done so, please silence your cell phones and Happy New Year, everyone. And if you're able, please stand and join for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome back to a new year, everyone. Hopefully you all had a safe, happy, and healthy holiday season, and now we're back at it. I would like to do a quick report from our closed session, which the City Manager will make sure I didn't steer clear this was your evaluation. Okay. And we had a closed session last month, and it was just the six-month evaluation for City Manager Kern in his new role as City Manager. Previous to that, he was our Public Works Director, and the council agreed to keep him. He agreed to stay, and the terms and conditions of, remaining terms and conditions of his contract kicked in. So, with that said, we're going to move on to oral communication. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar or matters of municipal concern not on the agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, also known as the Brown Act. However, the council cannot consider any issues or take action on any request during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes so that all speakers have an opportunity to address the council. I don't have any speaker cards under public comment or oral communications. Is anyone wishing to address the council on an item on the consent calendar or a non-agenda item? Excellent. We will close our oral communication, and I will entertain a motion for adoption of the meeting agenda with one modification. That is, item number nine is currently showing as being under public hearing, and it actually should be a general government item. So with that, I'll entertain a motion with that modification.
So moved. Second?
I have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, second by Councilmember Williams. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Counselor requests and ideas for discussion. Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Yes, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the support from Public Works Department, the City Manager, Mr. Kern, Melissa Velazquez, Mayor Canning, Councilmember Kraus, and Williams for attending the Water Workshop in December. I think that I was organized along with Cecilia Aguirre Curri. I think it was very successful. I think we got a lot of good information regarding water issues in our county and also Sonoma County and Lake County. Thank you for your support for attending, and also I want you to, hopefully you can attend the World Conference, Water Education for Latino Leaders, coming up in San Jose in March 20 and 21st. In other note, I want to mention that a lot of disasters are happening around the globe, and we all know by experience how bad they can be, especially fires and earthquakes. So please be prepared and keep thinking, taking care of each other, especially your neighbors around and those that are fragile, like elderly people in our community. We know that here in Calistoga, we had a lot of them, especially in the mobile parks. So please keep eye on them. And Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Lopez Ortega for organizing the Water Workshop. I thought it was very helpful. There were people from all over the North Bay in attendance. It was numerous hours. I had a takeaway here of all the different ways that water can be a problem, the things that water people, water experts, and academics worry about, and I'm just going to enumerate them. We've heard of them probably, but it was interesting to me to see them in one place. Lower groundwater level, seawater intrusion is a concern, surface water depletion, of course, we know that one, storage of water, and then the quality of the water, degradation of it is a concern, and subsidence of land, that is sinking land from extracting water from underneath the ground. So, all the different ways to worry about water. It reminded me of reading Homer, actually, and all the ways that Poseidon can be problematic. The Watershed Information and Conservation Council was another meeting I attended, and it dovetailed in a way with the Water Workshop. The big takeaway on that one, which was at the end of November, was that the Napa County has a plan to monitor groundwater, except the state rejected it, and so presently the county is forming a groundwater agency to ensure that the underground reservoir is in good shape. So I was glad to hear that. The county had tried a couple times to offer its plan to the state, and the state intervened and said, "We really want it to be a different way." So I was heartened to see that there is monitoring and work in the county in that direction. The well water is important. And at the Water Workshop with Councilmember Lopez Ortega, I learned also that the wells that were drilled in the county before 1969 are unpermitted, and probably, we just don't even know how many there are. So that was interesting to learn that. There were two other meetings that I attended, and I'll briefly summarize those. One was with folks locally here regarding the dog park, and there was some concern about whether the site that the council had offered for the dog park would be satisfactory, but the folks involved, interested in the dog park, we walked through it with Public Works, and they seemed to think that it will be a suitable site. So that looks like it's going in the right direction. It's not a perfect location, but it's better than no location. So that seemed to be a positive meeting, and thank you, Public Works Director, for leading with us on that. And finally, we had a very interesting meeting, entirely different topic regarding traffic. We met with Chief Selaya, and I met with about 10 or 12 members of the public from all around town, organizing and calling themselves the Calistoga Traffic Coalition. And they are concerned, as we've talked about it here a number of times throughout this last year, they're concerned with all matters traffic, including traffic noise, speeding, traffic coloring devices like speed bumps, enforcement, bicycle safety and usage, parking. And so Chief Selaya was happy to participate in that, and we think we, some good messages were communicated, and the public helped understand, was helped understand the difficulties involved, and the chief also acknowledged the concerns and is interested in addressing them. For example, the city representatives will be meeting with the resorts regarding guests riding bicycles on the sidewalks and also bicycle lights. Not all the bicycle infractions are visitors, but many of them are. And so the resorts will be, will be talking with the City Hall about improved safety in that way. So the Calistoga Traffic Coalition will be making some public information, probably offering a petition at some point to encourage the city to act even more aggressively in the ways that are most interesting to them. So I encourage them and thank them for their participation. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Kraus?
Yes, I'd like to see if the council would like to acquire a little extra effort on the part of city staff. We have, in the last month or so, at least before the holidays began, we have received several rather extensive public record requests, which I understand one required a considerable amount of city attorney time on coming up with a response, and another one, or maybe it was the same one, required quite a bit of time out of the Public Works Department. Given the amounts of money that I understand we spent, and I understand it's in excess of $10,000 on these requests, I would like the council to consider making public records request public information. So that if we have someone coming in, giving us requests that cost us many thousands of dollars, that the public knows exactly who made the request, what the request was, and how much it cost us to comply. And I checked with our city attorney, and a public records request is a public record, and it's public information as well. So that would be something I would think that if someone has a bona fide need for the information, the fact that their name might be publicized should not have a bearing on whether they make the request or not. But I think the public has a right to know, particularly when it's costing the kinds of money that it has recently cost us.
Thank you very much. A couple items I have. I want to also thank and acknowledge Councilmember Lopez Ortega for the Water Workshop. She brought a lot of folks from around the North Bay here to Calistoga to be educated on that, to contribute toward that, and hopefully who, many of whom stuck around and spent some money in town. As an update, Mike, are you going to, sorry, City Manager, are you going to give an update on the NCFG discussions we had yesterday, fairgrounds? How about if I take that for you? The City Manager, myself, and our attorneys met with the representatives negotiating team for the County of Napa to continue and further our discussions for the acquisition of a portion of the Napa County Fairgrounds. As you know, we have been in a due diligence period, the first of which expired on December 18th. We were allowed a brief extension of that, and it looks like, based on the discussions we have had yesterday, which were very positive and productive, that will be granted a further extension, and we will continue with those discussions. And as a reminder, we are looking to acquire 30, approximately 35 of the 70 acres, or more easily put, everything except the golf course. So that discussion does continue. When we have something concrete to bring back to the public, we will do so as soon as that is available. And then the last thing I'd like to say is a big thank you to the community for contributing to the 36th Annual Holiday Luncheon, which was on Christmas Day, the 25th. We had a lot of businesses and individuals who made contributions to make that event another success, and we also had a whole bunch of volunteers, many of whom are in this room, actually. So thank you very much. It's an important event in the community, been going on for as long as it has, and it's for folks who need a meal. It's also for folks who just want to share in the company of others who may not be able to go home for the holiday. So it's quite an event, and that was produced by our, and organized by our Park and Recreation Department. So thank you to city staff for your participation in that as well. With that, I'll move on to the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers. Just to echo what the mayor said on the Holiday Luncheon, it was very successful. We also delivered about 35 meals to folks that couldn't make it, so that was, that was great. Just a quick update on the PGNE Pih in preparation of next year's PSPs. A PGNE has-
It's a lot of letters, so tell people what all those mean.
Public Safety Power Shut-Off.
And what is a Pih?
It's a Planned Interconnection Hub, where they can place generators on a temporary basis to energize a portion of the town. They have awarded a contract for that work to begin. The long lead time item is actually installing new poles and new overhead wire to be able to convey that electricity from the lower part of Washington to the balance of the community. So it will be a work in progress. They've assured me that it'll be ready by this fall. With regard to our siren warning devices, those have been ordered. We realized going into the PSPs that they weren't going to be available for this season, and we wanted to make sure that we were ordering the right parts, the right equipment, and not duplicating effort. Those are scheduled to be shipped a second week in February, and then we'll begin the installation, and those should also be up before the fall. Recognizing that they weren't going to be in effect this last fall, we had made temporary arrangements. We mounted the old siren on a trailer with a generator, and we were ready to tow that around town if we had to, to provide warning. And then we also had the police and fire engines equipped with their mobile warning devices. So we were, I felt very confident that we were adequately prepared to warn the community. As part of that, we are participating with the Napa County Alert and Warning Subcommittee on Protocols for how to enter, how to fire up the sirens if we need to. So it's a collaborative effort countywide, and we're, rather than reinventing the wheel, we're participating in those conversations and discussions. And then any coordinated use of equipment that is out in the county will be part of that deliberation and discussion. So I think we're, we're making good progress in being prepared on that. So that's all I have to offer.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to Proclamations, Presentations, and Award. The first item we have is a proclamation in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. City of Calistoga Proclamation in Honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s vision of a beloved community becomes a reality when we join together in acts of justice and compassion to build communities of hope and opportunity for all people. Whereas the City of Calistoga recognizes our strength lies in a diverse and just community, where poverty, hunger, and homelessness will not be tolerated. Bound together, we commit to respecting the dignity of all people and strive to stand firm against racism and all forms of discrimination, bigotry, and prejudice. Whereas January 20th, 2020 marks Martin Luther King Jr. Day, a national day committed to Dr. King's vision of a just society for all people, we encourage residents, young and old, in the spirit of this national day of service, to contribute their time, talent, and energy to building the beloved community. Whereas on January 19th and January 20th, nonprofits, faith groups, and local service organizations have joined together to offer opportunities to volunteer throughout Napa County, we encourage our residents to participate as demonstration of our shared commitment to advancing an inclusive, loving, and compassionate community. Community service projects throughout the Napa County can be found, including in Calistoga, can be found at volunteer.cvnl.org/MLKdayNapa. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that on behalf of the City of Calistoga, I, Chris Canning, Mayor, do hereby issue the proclamation declaring January 19th and 20th as the MLK Celebration of Compassion and Inspired Action, continuing the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. by advancing his vision of a beloved community. Signed and sealed this, the 7th day of January in the year 2020. I've participated in this event before. It's a great way to be involved in your community, whether it be locally in Calistoga or throughout Napa. So please seek out those opportunities to volunteer. I know many of you do it on your own, on a regular basis, but it's a great way to focus that effort and energy on two particular days. Is there anyone in particular accepting it? All right. Thank you very much. Moving on, we have a presentation today, very important one, by Calistoga Chief of Police Mitch Selaya, Chief Selaya, and the introduction of newly hired police officers Katie Hutchins and Adrian Herrera Ortega, and a part-time dispatcher, Catherine Webster. Chief Selaya, welcome back and thank you.
Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers, City Manager Kern, and Acting City Clerk Mosse Velazquez, thank you very much for having us, for allowing us to introduce two new, or three new employees. I'd like to start off with our part-time dispatcher, if I could have Catherine Webster, also known as Kate. So we have a Kate, and as you mentioned earlier, we have two officers, another Catherine that goes by Katie, so it's going to get a little confusing, but we've squared it away. So it will be Officer Katie Hutchins, so Katie, and we have dispatcher Kate Webster. So, a little bit about, Kate is our newly acquired, thrilled to have her part-time dispatcher. She's currently in training. She's from the City of Napa, from the area, so we consider her a local. She graduated from the Napa Dispatcher Academy in December, so brand, new, right out of the academy, and we're putting her right to work. We are, we are just so thrilled to bring her on board. For those of you, a little bit about the dispatchers. So dispatchers, and Kate being one of them, is our face and voice of CPD, of the Calistoga Police Department. They're the ones that dispatch the officers, they run inquiries, they keep them safe, they answer the 911 calls, they answer the business lines, they answer the front counter, they deal with records and stuff as the first point of contact. They do everything. And so they're, they play a critical role within our organization. So I would like to thank and welcome Kate with us, and let her say a few words, and I believe she might have some family members or guests here that she'd like to introduce.
Hi, I'm Catherine Webster-Kate. You guys can call me. I just want to say thank you for this opportunity to serve the community, to Chief, and to all of you. I'm really excited to serve you guys and to serve the community and to be a part of this. And I just want to say thank you to my fiance Vincent, my dad Russ, my little sister Danielle, my mom Shannon, my grandfather John, and my grandmother Mary for supporting me during this and pushing me to be the best person that I can be. And I'm really excited for this opportunity and to get to be a part of Calistoga Police Department. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Kate, I've had the opportunity with the several PSPs we've had and other incidents we've had in Calistoga, to spend many an hour sitting in the police department in the dispatch area, and-
In the front, not the back?
Not in the back, right. We'll talk about that later. But I was stunned by just the volume of calls that come in, and then the range of questions you have. And to break it down very simply, as the chief said there, the face and the voice of the community, from very extreme and concerning calls to as simple as, "What time does the library open?" They cover everything. They cover it well. Their level of professionalism is amazing. You are with a very good group of people who do that currently. Thank you to your family for allowing you to work with us up here, all the way up the valley. Welcome to our little piece of heaven. And then my last comment would be, if you do get any calls or complaints for 1810 West Myrtle Street, just ignore it, okay? That's my house. Thank you very much and welcome.
Thank you.
So for the next two, I'd like to have step up Adrian Herrera and Catherine, or Katie Hutchins. So these are two brand spanking new officers. Their uniforms are cleat pressed, shoes are shined. We're going to see how long that lasts. So a little bit about them, and then I'll give them a little opportunity before we actually do the swearing. So Katie, not Kate, is also local. She's, I believe, born and raised, definitely raised up here in the Lake County and Sonoma area, is, I believe, graduated from Middletown High School, so very familiar with our area. Super excited to bring her on board. It's always great to bring local individuals, people that are part of the community, to serve the community, and it's great. She graduated from the Santa Rosa Police Academy in August of last year, so just a short few months, and we are just thrilled to have her. I believe she has a plethora of friends or family, and I'll give her an opportunity to acknowledge them or introduce them.
First off, I want to say thank you so much. This is an amazing opportunity for me, and I have loved every minute serving in this town. It's amazing. I love that people are so active. That was so amazing. And, oh, I have a lot of cute dogs out here too as well. You'll find out I'm a huge animal lover. And I just want to thank all of you for this amazing opportunity. It's an honor. It truly is. So, start with family. There's quite a few. My grandma, she's amazing. You can call her grandma, too. My Aunt Rose, Juliette, my Auntie Kim, Haley, my cousin, my sister Gina, my mom Angela, my Uncle Jorge, my cousin Brandon, my boyfriend Bill, my wonderful friend Ramona, my stepmom Michelle, my niece Leila, my papa, my uncle Rick, my friend Edith, her baby Adenaya, and her husband Oscar.
So Katie, they realize they all have to stay for the entire meeting. We're going to go over financing and programming. It'll be awesome.
Well, there'll be more to come for that, because we'll have the important event coming up in a few short minutes. So the next individual is Adrian Herrera. Adrian is also very much a local individual, born and raised, or at least raised here in Calistoga, a graduate of Calistoga High School, left the Calistoga High School to join the Marine Corps, recently was honorably discharged from the Marine Corps, went to Sonoma State, got a bachelor's degree in sociology. Say that again? Psychology. Psychology, sociology, well, in a minor. I forget what the minor was in, but sociol, there you go.
You got it.
It was in there. It is, it is past my bedtime, so if I'm a little loopy, you know, there's a reason for that. But I'd like to have him step up, and I believe he has some individuals here you'd like to introduce, and maybe say a few words.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Adrian. You've probably seen me around town several times. I jog constantly, so if you're calling 911 because there's a stranger jogging around town, it's probably me, trying to light the streets. So I really want to thank everybody for allowing me to serve my own community, coming back and finding a place to belong as well. Calistoga's always been really accepting, even growing up, even though growing up was a lot different because we couldn't have fun here in Calistoga being a kid, you know? Everybody, no laughter when you were a kid. When I was a kid. So I want to introduce my dad Gustavo Herrera, and my mom Sylvia Ortega, and my grandma Rosa Contreras, and I really appreciate that they're here. When I graduated the boot camp in the Marine Corps, I was only one that didn't have family members there. So it's a big deal for me to have them present here to see one of my accomplishments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So Chief, I don't know if this was a show for our performance, for our own benefit, but the City Manager and I were- and I were standing on the corner of Washington and Lincoln having a discussion, and Adrian claims to have just come from the gym, so I'm impressed.
I have seen him on a bike, and with a sweatshirt on, so I, you know, we, I'm going to take it as word that-
All right, fair enough.
I did miss, forget, one important factor, and I want to thank you all for this, because actually, if it had not been for your support, Adrian wouldn't be standing here right now. And this is the reason why. Several months ago, I came to you to ask for a training position, one that we hadn't had to put through the Academy. Adrian was that individual, one of the individuals that we sent to the Academy. He's come out, and now he's ready to serve his community. So thank you very much. If it wasn't for your support and having a training position, we would not have been able to send Adrian to the Police Academy. So thank you for that. So with that, I think we're ready. We do a swear-in and what we call a badge pinning. I've asked the two candidates to make sure they, when we asked them who wants to pin their badge on, that they have made that decision already. And I believe that Melissa's going to do the oath to them, and so if the officers will step forward in the middle of the room, so people are welcome to take pictures, so family members, you can stand up, get a good spot, they'll take the oath together, so it Congratulations. Okay, so it's not done until we pin the badge, so if you want to call them up, then- So the tradition is you put the point straight in and you just hit it really hard. So as much as, they really do want to stay, but they're young, and it's getting past their bedtime, and so we need to get them across, so I'll take the hit for them, we're going to excuse them, so them and their families can go to the Police Department.
Fair enough. Final word, yeah. To you both, thank you very much for the service you've provided thus far, thank you for the service you'll give us in the future. I am a family member of a police officer, going on 20 years, and my brother. I always take this opportunity to say a special thank you to your families for the sacrifices they have made and will make, and in trusting you to us in the service of our community. So, thank you very much. Okay, to the family members, this is your two-minute warning. You've got two minutes to vacate, or we lock the doors and keep you in for the rest of the meeting. To the rest of you remaining, now you have to fill the front seats. All right, now we will move on to a presentation. As you know, on a monthly basis, we have a presentation from a different department each month, and coincidentally, this happens to be the Police Department, so Chief Selaya, please.
Thank you very much, and I know my reputation precedes me, but I will try to be brief. So my presentation's going to be a little bit about a quick overview of 2019 and the Police Department, and some of the things we've accomplished and the things that we've done. So this year, besides myself, there have been two sergeants and five officers. We've had three vacancies for about a year now. I have a dispatch supervisor who works dispatch center, three full-time dispatchers, two part-time dispatchers at the moment, a community service officer, and we typically have two part-time parking, I currently have one. And that's basically the staff that was operating all of 2019. This year, we handled about almost 4,100 calls for service, a little bit more than last year. Our average call for service for the last three years is about 3,900, so we're a little bit over that. We took about 345 arrests, the average is typically 394. You know, a lot of this is as a result of our staffing levels. As I'm pulling a shift, I'm not always out to be there 100% of the time, as well as the supervisor. So it kind of had an impact to us throughout the year. As you know, traffic has been a topic here in Calistoga, traffic safety, bike safety, things like that. And so even with our staffing, we were able to make about over 1,300 traffic stops with a number of citations that go with that. Some of the things that come to mind as far as complaints that we get, there's usually quality of life stuff, code enforcement, a lot of vehicle abandonment, abandoned vehicle calls. We handled 125 of those, a little bit more than the average. Last year we did 123, the average is typically about 112. And, you know, we get to those and resolve those as often, as quickly as we can. Community outreach is a big thing for me, and we make an effort to do our community outreach, whether it's community meetings, community presentations, fairs, safety fairs or tours and things like that, anything that we engage the community on. We had about 57 of those events throughout the year. Last year we had 68, so we kind of dipped down a little bit, and it's been a little challenging against, again, with staffing levels. One thing I'm pleased to report, over the past couple of years, we've been seeing an uptick in burglaries. Last year, we had 15, our average is about 20, we only had seven this year. So that was amazing. However, on the other side of that, thefts, petty thefts, grand thefts, things like that, we are seeing still an increase in that. We had 54 of those. Last year we had 40, and the average has been around 50 or so. And so that tends to be something that's of concern to us, and which is why staffing and resources is extremely important, because high visibility, trying to deter those kinds of activity. Domestic violence, every city has issues with that as far as violent crime and things that are quite important for us to address. We had 23 last year, about what we had the year before, and hopefully we're seeing a downtick in that our average is typically around 30, 35, so a little bit of good news for that. One of the things juvenile, since I've been here, I've been seeing an increase in our juvenile contacts, juvenile activity. The juvenile cases that we've handled, we had 63 this year. Last year we had 57, the average for the last three years is about 60 or so. And I'll be giving a presentation that directly relates to juvenile activity, which is why I kind of wanted to throw that number out there. We had a number of accomplishments. We updated our body cameras, we were the first in the county to have those the last couple of years ago, so we're kind of leading the county, they've jumped on board with that. I already mentioned the training position we created last year, thank you very much for that support. With your support, we created two corporal positions as part of our succession planning as we move forward. Due to the traffic concerns and stuff, I have been working with various groups. We've purchased minimally six new radar signs that will allow us to pull data, they'll have extra bells and whistles for flashes to hopefully get drivers' attentions, to have them slow down in those areas where it's hazardous for them. Through your support, we're in the progress of implementing mobile data computers in our cars. It's going to allow us to be more effective, more efficient, and do a number of things that, at least much easier, so we can move our attention to other things, and use technology to our advantage. We created a professional services agreement with our neighboring city, Santa Elena, that was huge for us, as we deal with our staffing and resources. Partnering with local agencies is a way that we can help them and they can help us, and it has been really an outstanding partnership with them, as well as with the county. And we've used the county, they always answer the call, they always assist us when we need them, and so I do thank the county for that. We upgraded our dispatch center, and then last but not least, one of the topics of conversation is because of our resource issues, we engaged in Matrix Consulting Group through your support. They're in the process of doing a study, they've interviewed our staff, I believe we're looking for them to have some conversations with some community council members. They've had interviews with Santa Elena and with the county, and their task is to provide police services alternatives, as well as look at our organization to really address what I think has been an ongoing issue of recruitment and retention. And so we've been extremely fortunate with our two young individuals. I'll share with you, I just offered two conditional offers of employment for police officers yesterday, and so I'm hoping they get through the process in the next couple of weeks, and we'll have two more in front of you to serve our community. So I'll end it there. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to respond to those.
Council members, any questions?
Chief, thank you for this report. Last year you were able to issue a very nice comprehensive statistical report. Will that be available for 2019?
It is. I have Novembers and Decembers, you know, because I've been pulled to doing some patrol duties that I've been remiss and not able to stay on top of that. I do have drafts in front of me, which is where I got most of my numbers, and I'll put that out this week.
We'll look for it, thank you.
You guys, your team continues to do an amazing job, and I appreciate that, and especially with the resource challenges you've had in terms of staffing. The interactions with the community continue to be very positive. We're very fortunate to have the level of professionalism and care and concern that we do, and, you know, candidly, that comes from the top, and we're very fortunate to have you and continue to have you with us, and we sincerely appreciate that. And we'll do as we have in the past, tell us what you need, and we'll do our best to provide that to you. But I do know, in speaking with other communities, staffing, staffing, staffing is the number one concern across, at the very least, the North Bay, if not the entire state of California. And the more isolated you are, and the more expensive it is to live where you are, the greater that challenge is, so.
And I do want to respond to Councilmember Williams, in regards to the bike coalition and the bicycle issues, we did have a meeting today with the Napa Bicycle Coalition representative, as well as the Chamber Executive Director, the Public Works Director, myself, to look at that. I have an officer already assigned, has been made contact with all the resorts that have either checkout bikes, have bikes, offer bikes to their staff, to go on an education campaign to kind of share the rules of the road, and so working on a plan and updating our materials to go on an educational outreach, as well as an enforcement outreach. And one thing I do want to share that Councilmember Williams mentioned is that, you know, we are focusing at the moment at the resorts, but, you know, it is across the board. I mean, you know, we have community members that ride bikes too, and so this is going to impact everyone, and we'll look at a multi-pronged approach of not only providing materials, but education, and enforcement is a part of that. And so I think that the community is going to see some enforcement action, as well as the resorts and the guests that they bring here to the community. Thank you.
Chief, thank you for that report. Did you happen to bring up the topic of lights on the bikes that the resorts offer?
We did. We talked about that today, as far as, you know, working with them. Our goal is going to be try to get some compliance with the resorts, some of them have a different mindset about the bikes, they feel that the bikes is an add-on, and just like, we just want people to come here, and we don't check them out, and we just let them take them anytime they want, because it's an incentive to be in here. Well, the challenge with that is sometimes you get individuals that may not have ridden a bike for quite some time, or not even from this country or other parts of the United States, and the rules of the road are a little bit different. And then there are issues of safety gear, whether it's lights, or reflectors, or helmets, particularly when they bring their families there. And so we're kind of trying to tackle that and propose a plan, and engage the resorts so they implement some measures to not only make it safe and reduce liability and improve the safety for their guests, but also their resources. They claim they lose a lot of bikes, well, when you leave them out without any sorts of controls, that's going to happen.
And it's, you know, it's fair to say, we are a community that has encouraged, and actually we insist on any new development, that they have bike options, because for every bike that's out there, that's one less car that's downtown, it impacts parking, see, basically environmental impact as well. So it's one of those, be careful what you push for and press for, because there are some of those consequences, and it's just people having not been on bikes for a long time, because they're coming from somewhere that, maybe they don't do that activity, so.
Well, and I think though, probably the one of the more challenging events is going to be the environmental controls, as far as, you know, what can we do to the environment to change that? I mean, we are who we are, the roads are the way the roads are, and so that's going to be something to contend with, you know, between pedestrians, vehicles, and bicyclists, sometimes they don't all quite get along as we would like them to.
Very true. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, moving on to the consent calendar, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar as presented, unless anyone would like an item pulled.
I'd like to pull item number five. Chris?
Number five? Anyone else? All right, I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar excluding item number five.
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Item number five, consideration of a resolution approving broadbanning of salary ranges for department directors. The recommended action is to consider a resolution approving broadbanning for department directors. Councilmember Williams, your question.
Yes, I'm in support of this. I only wanted to draw attention to it, because the description, it wasn't clear to me, what does this mean, broadbanning? I hadn't heard that term before, and so City Manager Kern and I talked about this, and I finally understood what this was about, and I support it. And the public probably is aware that the city employees have a salary schedule, and that's negotiated. And so this measure does two things, as I understand it, and Mr. Kern, you could correct me if I err on this, but it extends the number of SEPs, that is, it extends the salary range higher, at least theoretically, possibly higher. So it does that, it extends the range, the SEPs, and that is the amount that can be paid. And secondly, it gives the City Manager more flexibility in negotiating with- And secondly, it gives the city manager more flexibility in negotiating with the employees in this group, the unrepresented group. So that prior to this, the city manager was locked into offering a new employee a certain amount at a fixed step. He didn't have the flexibility of offering more or less depending on experience and so on. And this measure gives the city manager that flexibility. So I think that's a good thing. I wanted the flexibility to go lower as well as higher so that, you know, there's a floor on this new range of salaries. And for various legal concerns, I'm going to go with what's offered here right now. And I'll be looking into more how a floor might be lowered as well as a ceiling raised in order to provide maximum flexibility to the city manager as conditions change over the years. So I think this is a good thing. It's a step in the right direction and I support it. And I only bring it up because it's not clear from the discussion what exactly is going on here with this item number five.
Fair enough. And it is not a, because the question was asked of me, it is not a broadbanning of salary increases for everyone right now that we're approving. It stays with, it allows the flexibility, especially in recruiting.
It opens the possibility at a future point. It doesn't mean that anybody's getting a raise right now.
That's correct.
All right. Anyone in the public with any questions on this since we pulled the item? All right, we'll bring it back to the council. I'll entertain a motion on item number five as presented.
I move that we adopt it as presented.
I second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Williams. We have a second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to public hearing, item number nine, potential, 10. Sorry, that's right. Item number 10, just keeping you on your toes. City, because we moved to number nine. City of Calistoga's approval that maintenance of effort was met for fiscal year 2018, 2019 in approving the updated five-year project list under the Measure T program. The recommended action is following the public meeting. One, consider adopting a resolution approving the maintenance of effort was met under Measure T program for fiscal 2018, 19. And two, consider adopting a resolution approving the updated five-year list of projects under Measure T programming and determining that the actions authorized by this resolution are exempt from CEQA. Taking us through this item today will be Derek Rayner. I thought you were going to already start motioning in that direction. I panicked for a second, so I'm looking to my left and right and Derek's not here. Public Works Director and City Engineer Derek Rayner. Derek, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Derek Rayner, Public Works Director. The item before you tonight is basically every two years we come to city council to basically show our five-year project list for Measure T. Measure T, as I'm sure you're aware, replaced Measure A, which was basically a half-cent sales tax for Napa County that helps improve our roads and our infrastructure related to roads. So every two years, we'll be updating this five-year outlook list. We did this back in 2018. We're here again in 2020. And this program goes out for about 25 years. So it's, Measure T is going to be a great program. We're going to be receiving, the estimate is close to about a little over $500,000 a year of generated sales tax revenue that will go towards road projects. And the second part of this as well is having a public hearing for those projects. So if any members of the public have any questions or comments on that, feel free to come up and have your voice heard. And then the other part of this is basically showing that our maintenance of effort level, which was a calculation, we had to go back and look at how much the city had contributed to road projects historically over about a four-year period and give an average cost, which was close to $300,000, $287,000. So we basically have to make that contribution and commit to that contribution of our own general fund monies towards the program to maintain and be compliant with their rules and requirements. So with that, we have a list in the back. We've got a kind of a summary of the projects over the next five years through 2025. And I'll just lightly touch on a couple of these. Silverado Trail, Lake Street, Harley, Washington, Cedar, Grant. Won't be 100% of the roads. It'll be portions of these roads, just to clarify that. And Washington Street. And then we've got some micro-surfacing projects that we're going to, you know, we recently did a couple of years ago, we did a lot of micro-surfacing around town and slurry sealing and those kind of things you have to do about every five years to keep and maintain that road condition. With that, if you have any questions, welcome those.
Thank you. Any questions?
You know, the state passed a increase in the gasoline tax. Is there any maintenance of effort that we need to show about that? Is that money just mixed in here with other funds or is that?
That's, there's the maintenance of effort. My understanding is it's only tied to the Measure T funding. And the SB 1, we have a little less, it's around $100,000 a year that we're estimating that's coming in for the gas tax. It's a little lower just because of our population.
Okay. And then just to satisfy my curiosity, so we have about $300,000, $400,000 more coming in for street repairs and that doesn't just affect the streets, it's also sidewalks?
Correct.
And?
Storm drainage.
And drainage. So, you know, it's a lot of money, but are we up against the same problems that other construction projects have, which is a lot of increase in costs? So we're not getting as much for that money as we would have, let's say, two or three years ago when it was first?
Correct. Yeah, that's true. Construction costs have gone up significantly with, you know, labor shortages as well, supply demand. So it's a challenge. Our PCI, you know, has gone up about 30% from 2016 to 18, which was great, but we did kind of the easy roads, the easier ones to fix. And now we're sort of set back into this remove, replace, the more expensive projects in a lot of the older areas of town that are also challenged with utilities as well.
Okay, thank you.
Question, Derek, on Harley Street. I see it listed here and we're all very familiar with Harley Street. Rated the worst street in the city of Calistoga in terms of conditions not to live on. You're showing a project cost of $180,000. Is that a replacement of that? Because I can't imagine that is if it's an Oregon street, Oregon surfaced concrete.
Yeah, that'll be for design and kind of getting the topo and everything kind of prepared for that. It'll be a little less than that, but to get that done. And then a portion of it will be, it'll actually be probably closer to $700,000 or so, $800,000.
And the projected time on when that street is being constructed? Because there is a belief on that street. I don't know where this started, but I was thanked for it and was immediately given pause that I did not believe that to be the case, that it's going to be replaced this summer.
We're hoping to do that.
Really?
But we'll, we still have, we have a RFP out right now to get some consultants to give us proposals on the design. And then we hope if we can expedite the design, that we could potentially do something late summer, maybe fall.
Okay. Because I thought this was one of those farther out on our horizon.
There's no promises, but we're going to do our best.
Are these projects being brought along by the contract engineer that we've authorized?
Yes, John Draper is helping with that project, correct. Yeah, it's a big help.
So your office is not going to be stressed more by completing these projects because you have help that you've brought in or that the city has brought in specifically to do this?
Correct. The consulting help is very important for getting all these projects done. And as these revenues come in from Measure T and SB 1, you know, we're really finding out we've got to be ahead of the game on designs. We've got to have off-the-shelf designs that are done, ready to go so we can actually, you know, be productive.
Great.
Derek, on the scope, on the scope of the work for Harley, is there work underground anticipated as well, sewer lines, for example? Or is it only?
There will not, no.
So it's only the surface that is going to be addressed?
Yeah, unfortunately, you can't use the funding for utilities. So it's only the roads that will be done.
However, once we get under there, if there's something that needs to be addressed, it will have to be addressed, I'm assuming.
Right.
All right. Anyone else? All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone with any questions, comments, concerns, please make yourself known. Nobody from Harley Street's here. All right. I'll close public comment, bring it back for further discussion. I'll entertain a motion on this item as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Councilmember Williams. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Derek. Moving, that is the end of the public hearing. We will now move on to general government and we're going to move to item number nine, potential revisions to the CMC Chapter 15.50 Building Standards Appeals and Advisory Board. The recommended action this evening is provide direction to staff on appropriate municipal code amendments to Chapter 15.50. Taking us through this item will be Planning and Building Director Lynn Goldberg. And first and foremost, Lynn, thank you for all of your service. Lynn has recently announced her retirement, but not until April though, so we're going to get a lot of work out of her before then.
I know, I got four items.
But you have certainly, it's been my pleasure to have worked with you and to continue to work with you for a few more, for a few more months. But you have served the city well and thank you very much.
It's been an absolute pleasure.
So, thank you. All right, with that said.
So, let's get some business done. So the state requires the city to establish a process to hear appeals of decisions made by the building official and the fire chief and allows the city council to establish a local appeals board. And in Calistoga, that has taken the form of the Building Standards Appeals and Advisory Board, which hears appeals, but it also acts as an advisory board to the building division and the fire department regarding building standards codes. The board meets on an as-needed basis. It's usually a couple of times a year. And the municipal code specifies that the board has to have seven members and they must be qualified by experience and training in certain areas that are listed in the staff reports, such as registered design professional, registered fire protection professional, engineer, general contractor, certified access professional, and general industry or business representative. Just like all of the other committees and commissions, the board members are appointed by the mayor, subject to confirmation by the city council. And on this particular board, they serve three-year terms. There are currently five vacancies on the seven-member board, so right now it's not functioning, but it's all right, we don't have anything, any matters for it right now. The state doesn't have any requirements as to what the composition of the appeals board has to be or its size or the members' specific areas of experience. It just calls for them to be knowledgeable in applicable building codes and regulations. So since we are faced with the challenge of filling five board vacancies, staff has identified several areas of concern with the municipal code's limitations, particularly because it bans consecutive terms. It limits board members to serving only two consecutive terms, which is a limitation not found on any of the other commissions and committees. So that automatically after six years, you know, that limits, further limits the number of citizens or local professionals that can serve on the board. Right now, three of the four board members' terms expired in 2019 and they cannot be reappointed due to this limitation. And filling seats on the board with qualified professionals that meet the required qualifications is also a significant challenge. None of the other commissions or committees have specific qualifications in order to serve. And it's also often challenging to assemble the four-member quorum necessary because most of these professionals and property owners are conflicted with items that are before us because they're involved in the trades. So sometimes we have to draw straws in order to take action on an item. So to address these concerns, staff is recommending that the city council consider directing staff to initiate a number of municipal amendments. One would be to reduce the size of the board from seven to five members. And this change would facilitate recruiting members as well as establishing meeting quorums. We're also recommending that you eliminate the limitation on the number of consecutive terms that members may serve over a six-year period. They might be at 10 meetings, you know, so they're not going to be involved in that many meetings for a long period of time. And then eliminating the qualifications requirements or replace them with a general statement aligned with the state's requirements, that they're generally knowledgeable in the applicable codes and regulations. And then we would go through the normal application process, you know, why do you want to serve? How are you qualified to serve on this board? So we would still get information as to whether they are familiar with, you know, applicable codes that the city has to administer. So we didn't bring a specific ordinance amendment to you tonight because we wanted to get your feedback and based on that, we'll be coming back hopefully with a draft code amendment for you to consider. Have any answering questions?
Thank you very much. Council members, any questions?
So I appreciate the ideas you have here and the difficulty of assembling a quorum. And I do like the idea of reducing the board size from seven to five. And I do like the idea of eliminating qualification requirements. I think the general educated public can be of assistance here. I do think limitation, I do think a limitation on terms is important to retain. And I would, I would like to keep that. I've learned in the last year that term limits is a pretty popular concept here in town. And I realize that this is the only body that has those limits, but it's come up many, many times, not in this context, but in a general way. So, and I think it's important myself that a variety of folks serve in these various bodies. I know you've had difficulty getting them, but I'm hoping, I'm hoping that with the qualification requirement eliminated, that that barrier won't be an obstacle and that term limits, which I think are a good idea, will still make sense. So I would be in favor of one and three, but not in favor of two.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would agree, reducing from five to, from seven to five and then the elimination, I mean, we have an ordinance here relative to this body that is far stricter than the state requirement. So let's get in line there. In terms of the, in terms of the term limits, I'm less concerned on an appointed body than I am an elected body when it comes to term limits because that decision can always be made because this is an appointed body, correct?
Yes.
So that's where you can kind of manage and adjust that. And we're seeing an impact already of term limits on our ability to fill the seats we have today. So my recommendation would be to accept or give direction on all three of the suggestions you're making relative to this body, including elimination of the term limits. Again, because it's, the body here is one who appoints, or I should say, planning here, appoints. So we can make that decision if we think somebody's served too long on it from that standpoint. It's just food for thought. Other council members want to help give direction here?
I think it's important that members of the community participate in, you know, in the decisions they're taking. So eliminate... So eliminating the requirements will be, you know, a good, uh, thing to do, and also the size, um, so I, I support that.
Where are you on term limits? Term limits?
Term limits, um, as you say, uh, because it's appointed, so I don't see.
Okay.
To change it.
I don't have a problem with.
Okay.
The term limits.
Keeping them or?
Eliminating the, the term limit.
Okay. Uh, so this will be back to us for discussion, it's just we have to give direction. Is there anyone in the public wishing to address this item? All right? So do you feel you have enough direction?
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you, council, for that. Moving on to item number 11. Authorize the Calistoga Police Department, CPD, to accept the California Department of Justice, also known as the DOJ, tobacco grant award of $472,642, and enter into a memorandum of understanding with the DOJ. The recommended action is consider adopting a resolution. Taking us through this item will be Chief Salaya. Welcome back, chief.
Thank you. So I, I, I can't really share how, or express how thrilled I am to bring this, uh, in front of you, to you. Since I've been here in my short seven years, I've had ongoing conversations with the school district, the principals in general, and the superintendent about the school resource officer, and how do we make that happen, and all that kind of stuff. And, uh, this, uh, Department of Justice tobacco grant program just posed a wonderful opportunity for us to achieve that, but also address some really significant health issues that are facing our youth today. I'm not gonna go through every detail of the staff report, I think it's pretty clear and direct, but I, I wanna share that, you know, based on the Healthy Kids Survey, there is a, a clear and present perception from our youth of the decrease in perception of harm or threats to them on tobacco products. And directly from, from the, uh, survey, that it's went from 78% in 2016 thinking, yeah, this is harmful to us, to 58% in, in 2016, I'm sorry, in 2018, from 2016 to 18. And then when it came to the vaping products, uh, again, another, another drop in perceptual harm, even more significant, from 49% of our, of population, and this is Calistoga students. The, the Healthy Kids Survey is across the state, but the numbers I'm using are from the Calistoga students. And so, it's, it's not a general, uh, issue of, of harm, it's specific to our students. And so 49% in 2016 has dropped to 90%, 19% as far as the harm that vaping has. And given current events, you know, with things that we're seeing in the news and the media, you know, the deaths that have occurred, illnesses that are occurring, and, uh, as they're trying to figure out how that's going, it just seemed the, uh, an appropriate moment to pursue this tobacco grant. One, to, uh, generate some community outreach, some safety issues, some enforcement things, uh, to try to reduce this, this, what I think is an imminent health issue to our students. So, the, uh, the grant program itself is pretty much laid out, there are five goals, it's, they're pretty specific, and it gives an outline of how we accomplish those goals. It's really, uh, a multi-disciplinary approach through a school resource officer being the administrator of this grant. It would be to educate, uh, the harm to our youth, community outreach, training for, uh, our school staff, for our police department, and, and, uh, enforcement actions, things that they can do, education and training with some enforcement of our retailers here in the city, uh, and then overall just community outreach. And so again, I don't really wanna go through every detail, I think it's pretty much laid out here, but I do wanna answer any questions you might have about the grant. I will say this, uh, the grant was submitted for the maximum, which was six years. Uh, so when you read the proposal, it says $864,000. Uh, what I, what we were awarded was $472,000, a little bit more than that, uh, for three years. However, by the time the Department of Justice got us the paperwork, uh, which was in late December, it's just not starting. So the reality, it's two and a half years, because the grant ends, I think, in June of 2021, um, or 2022, I'm sorry. So, uh, uh, we have two and a half years of funding. The funding covers the salary for that period of time, it covers the costs for recruitment and, uh, and hiring, the equipment costs, the benefits, everything that goes with that package. And, uh, in the grant, there is no language that talks about matching funds, so we are not committed to matching funds, nor does it talk about, uh, extenuating, that once the grant is over, that we're obligated to continue the program, though it's my hopes that this will be a position that we would hold on to.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions? I do have a speaker card on this item. Zach? Sorry, I should be more formal, but I'll let you do that. Should you so choose, share with us your name and your address, and limit your comments to the maximum of three minutes.
Sure thing. Um, Zach Kuzick, 1316 Berry Street. I'm here representing, though, um, Up Valley Family Centers and a couple of different collaborative partnerships that we have that we actually, um, submitted letters of support for the chief with this application to the DOJ. First and foremost, our Community Schools Initiative, which is a collective impact partnership of 38 organizations that serve children and families in the schools here in Calistoga. Um, we submitted a letter of support to the chief, saying that we will support the activities that the SRO will conduct on school campuses, and these are all agencies that are already embedded within the school districts and have staff on the ground that see the value in this work. Um, I can speak specifically to the family center, in that we also manage the youth diversion program in partnership with Calistoga Police Department. And the St. Helena Police Department applied for a grant similar to this last year, they were awarded the grant. And since the SRO has been in the schools, we've seen, um, three times the number of referrals to diversion, so we've been actually able to catch more students, um, before they get into trouble, before they go through the system. So this preventative measure really works, we're able to attach more resources to kids that need it, and it's been a really great benefit to the programs that we partner with down in St. Helena. And we're looking forward to potentially that benefit up here as well, if the SRO comes through. Um, the other coalition is the, um, Up Valley Partnership for Youth, of which there are organizations countywide that are working on drug and alcohol prevention work, especially around tobacco, and they fully supported this project as well, and submitted another letter, um, in support of the chief with this work.
Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
And, uh, thanks for the work you guys do. Appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to address the council on this item? All right, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for consideration. And we'll entertain a motion on this item as presented.
So moved.
I have one, one question for the chief.
Sure.
Yes. Chief, do you anticipate, um, that this program will be of service to students who are not in attendance in Calistoga schools? Will there be, uh, a way to reach out to those kids? And I don't know the percentage or the numbers now, but there are, you know, many kids in the community who don't go to Calistoga School, Calistoga High School. Is there a way to reach them in this program to, do you anticipate being able to do that?
Well, my feeling is, is if they're in, within the city limits, that we will, we will have an impact and we'll do our best. So the way I wrote the grant was, uh, it is, it is specific to a school resource officer, but not specific that only on one of their own school grounds, which is why when you, when you read the proposal, it talks about, uh, enforcement issues outside the school, outreach, education, training outside the school grounds. I mean, yes, for the school staff, but also retailers, community, that's the other thing, is educating the community in general, whether you're, whether you're a parent or not, as far as, uh, uh, the harm and the risk, because, you know, there's secondhand smoke. Well, you don't think that doesn't happen with vaping and those kinds of things. And so, you know, it isn't just the families, but it's, it's the community overall. And so, uh, the way I wrote it is, is that, that the officers, or officers that we picked to do this, you know, are gonna be operating outside the school in the city limits. You know, I'm, I'm assuming that we will partner with St. Helena and try to, uh, you know, uh, utilize those resources, since I think we face kind of the same thing. We already participate in the Up, Up Valley Partnership for Youth, which is St. Helena and Calistoga. So, uh, definitely, uh, we're, it's not just for, we're not gonna be checking high school ID cards to see that you're a student in the elementary or the high school.
Thank you. All right, with that said, we have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, so we have a second on the item as presented.
Second?
Thank you, second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, motion carries unanimously. Chief, thank you, good job in writing that grant for us, we appreciate it.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Moving on, item number 12, informational item on the results of the 2019 Calistoga Community Survey. The recommended action is to consider accepting the report. Taking us through this item will be Zach Tuzinger, Senior Planner and Assistant to the City Manager. Zach, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Council. I got a PowerPoint that's coming up here for you. Um, so I'm here to report to you the results of the community survey that we did, um, in November, December of last year. Um, I, I will just preface this to say I could probably talk about this for two hours, but I promised the city manager I'd keep this to about 10 minutes, so I'm gonna do my best. So, a few highlights, um, just kind of generally. Oh, no, we're, we're good. Um, thank you. Um, so, so the survey was available online and by paper, it was anonymous. We did track IP addresses, of course, to keep people from taking it a whole bunch of times, multiply. Um, it was available in English and Spanish. The survey was open from November 18th through December 6th, so for about three weeks. And we tried a whole bunch of different ways to get the word out about it. Uh, e-notify, Channel 28, flyers, did a table at the farmer's market, we mailed postcards out to residences, we had stuff on the website, newspapers, social media, Up Valley Family Center, Rotary, and other groups tried to reach out and encourage people. Ultimately, we got 600, over 600 responses, I'm, I'm pretty happy with those numbers. Uh, you know, always want more people to participate, uh, do wish it had been maybe a little bit representative of the demographics of the community, uh, but on the whole, in terms of just raw numbers, uh, you know, I feel pretty happy for this being our first time doing a community survey like this. So, I definitely appreciate all the folks who helped us get the word out about it. So, so I'm not gonna go into absolutely every question here. All of the data for the survey that we collected is available on the city's website. A couple of people asked me tonight where that data was, so, uh, we may take a look at where it is on the website tomorrow and see if we can't move it a little bit closer to the front page, make it easier for people to access. But, um, uh, so, the, the questions, I'll jump into the, some of the ones that I thought were most interesting, that we'd share with council tonight. Uh, one of the first questions was, is, is Calistoga heading in the right direction? And, uh, the results there were 47% generally, in, in some way, right direction, and 47% generally, in some way, the wrong direction. So, um, that was kind of an interesting statistic. Most serious problem facing Calistoga. Um, this was an open-ended question, and I spent a lot of time going through every response on these open-ended questions and trying to categorize them and put them in buckets. Um, housing, 30% of the responses mentioned housing in some form or another, either more housing or more housing that's affordable. Uh, 11% too much development, 9% trying to balance small town versus tourist town, another 8% empty storefronts in the downtown, 7% traffic, 6% water sewer issues, including sewer, water sewer rates, and another 6% resort growth. Top issues facing Calistoga. This was a question where we gave, uh, 16 or 17 different topics and asked people to rate, how serious of an issue is this for you, uh, for Calistoga? These were the top six most serious issues. I know the font up there is a little small. Um, the most important one, or the most serious, down at the bottom, was business retention. Uh, 90% rated that as serious, public safety power shut-offs, also over 90%. Housing that's affordable, water rates, and condition of city streets all also garnered more than 80%. Residential growth in Calistoga, asking, what would you say there is too much or too little growth? 25% too little growth in Calistoga, 26% too much growth, 43% about the right amount of growth. Do you feel a sense of community in Calistoga? Um, 87% said they do feel some sense of community in Calistoga. Another open-ended question, if Calistoga could do one thing differently, increase housing options, affordability, manage or limit growth, preserve Calistoga as a small town, improve the condition of streets and sidewalks, address business vacancies downtown, keep the whole city powered during public safety power shut-offs, deal with traffic issues more effectively, address water sewer rates and infrastructure, more recreational and educational opportunities, and more communication and community input. Next question, asked about the job approval of different groups, different departments in town. I won't go through these individually, but I would note that fire and police got the highest marks, um, for job approval. Good for them. Uh, rating of city-provided services, just asking, you know, how, how good a job is the city doing in providing services? And, um, here, uh, 56% said that the city was, uh, doing a good to excellent job of providing city services. City staff courteousness, um, 73% said city staff was, uh, good to excellent in providing courteous service. Uh, would note that 15% said not applicable, presumably they hadn't had a lot of interaction, interaction with staff recently. City's response to the public safety power shut-offs. 78% said they approved to some degree of the city's response. Um, and the follow-up question to that was, what are, what are the opportunities for the city's improvement during the public safety power shut-off? Again, another open-ended question, tried my best to categorize the responses. Uh, probably not a huge surprise here, that the number one response was trying to get power to both sides of the river during PSPSs.
I couldn't agree more, living on the other side of the river.
Uh, the, the next two were, is the city maybe exploring or doing a better job, uh, looking into some other methods of communication and getting information out during shut-offs? Um, and then quite a few people said, you know, nothing, the city did a pretty good job considering everything that was going on. Another question that was open-ended was, if the city were to receive or, or experience a significant budget surplus, how should that money be spent? 33% said streets and sidewalks, another 18% recreation, 17% water and sewer, uh, housing 15%. Power, electricity solutions, I think that might be related to the PSPS, uh, another 12%. Enforcement of traffic laws, um, it's kind of a nice bell curve there, 9% excellent, 37% good, 38% average. Satisfaction, or your satisfaction with Calistoga's downtown, another bell curve here, uh, 5% very satisfied, 34% satisfied, 24% neither satisfied nor dissatisfied, and a little over 30% at some level of dissatisfaction with the downtown. So the follow-up question to that was, so what are your priorities for downtown? Another open-ended question here, uh, by a wide margin, addressing business vacancies was the top thing that, that popped up in all the responses here, um, and kind of related to that, more local-serving businesses, 18%, beautification, streetscaping, 16%. Limiting tasting rooms, 16%, uh, finding a way to lower commercial rents, 15%, uh, more diverse or affordable dining, 12%. Um, asking about, how would you rate Calistoga's efforts to address climate change? About 17% said just right, 39% not doing enough, and 40% not sure. So, um, there might be some opportunities, um, there. We did have, um, and it was suggested by the council, a question at the end, so what are some other important things that are important to you who are not asked about in this survey? Um, the fairgrounds, code enforcement, future of the police department, the library, our general plan, plans for future growth, cell towers, streetlights, pedestrian safety, disaster preparedness, and Yellow Rose Ranch. Those are all things that came up pretty frequently, um, in that. So, as I said, all of the survey information is available online, answers to all the questions. There was over a dozen questions related specifically to recreation, there's a lot of great information there. Um, that merits in some ways its own presentation, so I didn't feel like it would be, uh, appropriate to include it here. Um, additional questions with answers and information related to housing, sidewalks, and public transportation, all that information's available there. Information related to how residents stay informed, I wish I'd put it on here, um, but we did find that the vast majority, over 90% of the people who took the survey, said they are signed up for NICSIL alerts. We did include in the survey on questions about NICSIL alerts and e-notify, links allowing people to go in and sign up for those things. So hopefully, we got a little bit of a jump, um, on the folks signed up for both e-notify and NICSIL alerts, just from doing the survey. Additionally, all the information on the demographics of the folks who took the survey, um, is available online, and written responses to all the open-ended questions are there. Didn't print that out for you, it's over 120 pages printed out. So if anybody's looking for some good bedtime reading, um, it's there, if you wanna hear from about 600 of your fellow residents about their thoughts about different issues in Calistoga. Again, we'll try to put it a little bit higher on the website, making that easier for folks to find. But happy to answer any questions, appreciate your full, uh, support in doing the survey.
First, you, you did a great job on this, really appreciate it. Uh, I know you put a lot of effort and energy in this, and there are companies that do this, that charge tens of thousands of dollars to do so. Um, you took this on and, and did it very well, uh, and we certainly appreciate the input of the community, and certainly, uh, Mr. Holm helped out quite a bit. out quite a bit. It's nice to have somebody who has decades of experience in survey to help us through that. I was not surprised by some of the items, very surprised by others. This is an excellent tool, and most of us up here were advocates for this. An excellent tool to help us, especially as we enter into the goal-setting session and enter into the budget session so that we know, or can help us refine where we would apply our resources, both human capital that we have that work for us, as well as financial resources and helping to make some of these decisions. I was stunned by the number of people on NICSIL. That's fantastic. And I found that to be in contrast to the answers we received on PSPS and the communication level, because I thought we did a relatively good job, and most people are on NICSIL on that element. We're going to take some of the abuse on the PSPS's, something completely out of our control. If we had any control over powering the other side of the river, some of us very selfishly would want that to happen faster than later. The only thing that I would point out, which is a very important point of reference when you go into, and I encourage everyone to go into the entire, it's pages, 31 pages of results of the, kind of similar to the graphs that Zach has presented. It's very important when you're looking at the answers to the questions and the percentage to some of those answers, to understand the demographic, age demographic of who took this survey. And especially, what jumped out to me the most was the housing questions, when there was such a high percentage of people who said, we have just enough housing, or it's just right, or we don't need anymore. But just as a quick summary, 71%, and we're happy for everyone who took the survey, but again, putting in your frame of reference, 71% of the people who'd answered this survey were over the age of 51. 24% were between the ages of 26 and 50, which we've often referred to as kind of the middle of the village, the middle of the city. These are people who are starting their lives, starting their families, looking for somewhere to live. So I would just say, as you're reviewing those, the results, bear that in mind, because you're at different stages of life, and I'm sure that impacted how you answered some of these questions. But I could not be happier with the result and the level of effort and energy you put in. And having been in organizations that have done surveys before, that's a pretty remarkable number for a passive survey versus, you know, you are forced to take it and we throw you out of your house type of thing. So very well done on that, and I appreciate your efforts and the efforts of the entire staff to do this. And I would be one to absolutely advocate repeating this at least biannually, if not every year, because that helps you to kind of gauge how you're doing in some of these elements. So, anyone else?
Reading the report, it says the 619 community members participate in this survey, but I'm really surprised that only 19 times the survey, it was filled by, in Spanish. So I wonder, is anything different that we can do to have, maybe have, I don't know, maybe a community forum or a meeting with the Latino community and explain then better, you know?
Yeah, you know, I-
In the future, I mean.
Absolutely.
Because it's really, you know, it's sad not to have a participation of the Latino community.
Yeah, I completely agree. Definitely want broader community participation if we do this in the future. And I think if we do do this again, we'll definitely try to have some more conversations with folks about what are some of the best ways to do outreach and methods for that and explore some other alternatives. Because, you know, while this is really good information, it would be better information if it was truly representative of the whole community, absolutely.
But I really appreciate the effort.
Did we reach out via the school district and ELAC and Family Center?
We did reach out through the Family Center. Really appreciate their help. We did not manage to get flyers out through the school district. Some of that was timing with the Thanksgiving holiday when we did the survey. But that's, you know, an easy thing that we'll, if we did this again, that we would do in the future. And I would note that all the materials that were pushed out, promotional materials, flyers, postcards, everything for the survey, those were in both English and Spanish.
Will be better to do it in a different time of the year, maybe in the spring.
It's something we may consider, possibly tweaking it a little bit. Particularly if we decided to do it annually, you know, we probably wouldn't want to turn it around and do it so soon after this survey. But if, you know, biannually, you know, maybe moving it to the spring or summer, that might be a possibility.
Especially because I know that during November and December, a lot of the Latino families, they leave, you know, because there is the holidays, so most of them, they go to Mexico. So maybe a different time of the year will be better response. Thank you.
And I would agree, I was surprised by, at first when I read it, I thought it was just 19 of the 22 that were the paper-completed surveys was from Latino community, and the rest were captured electronically. But clearly, that's not the case, and that is not a representation of what we have. Part of the reason, as you recall, we pushed to get this done is so that we'd have the information as we go into goals and objectives and budgeting. But I would be open to any opportunity to reengage the community on that. And I don't know how we would, if we could even do that.
I think the demographics speak volumes. As you mentioned, the number of people that responded that were in the more senior Gary Kraus, Don Williams category, rather than the my-daughter category, kind of a thing. So, and the participation from the Latino community is a big concern. I'm not sure what percentage of the community they are. I'm sure it's-
49%.
49. I was going to guess at 50%. But, you know, basically, 50% of the community didn't respond to this, or percentage of that. So I will want to see a little bit more of a drill down in on how the demographics come out on this. And I think it's worthwhile doing. I think that we need to have this information before we go into our goal-setting session. So if we were to do this in the spring, we wouldn't have the results in time for our goal-setting. But certainly, if we started this, like, let's say, this time next year, you know, people are back from vacations, you know, holiday vacations and everything, and kind of settling back in, and we would have the results then in February or early March, perhaps. But I'm not in favor of doing another survey in two months. You know, I think we wait a year and do it again. And thank you very much, Zach. Good job.
And if anything I can do to gather the Latino community, please let me know, and I'm more than happy to help.
Absolutely. And if I may, just make one note. So we did have, you're absolutely correct, 19 of the surveys were just the Spanish version of the survey, which was identical, other than translated to Spanish. We did ask separately, kind of a racial or ethnic question. And I think the proportion of the Latino community that answered was significantly more than 19. That being said, so over 8% said they were Latino or Hispanic who answered the survey out of 600 folks. A significant number of folks chose not to answer the demographic questions, too. So we are a little bit in the dark, in the dark, the exact number of folks who answered from different demographics. But I think overall, your point, we need to do and look at better ways of trying to make sure the entire community participates in a representative fashion, 100%.
I'm not sure when we'll be getting results back in from the US Census that's starting pretty soon, but it'll, I don't know if we'll be able to do some matching, not on this survey, but perhaps a future survey to see how things line out there.
Any other questions? Anyone in the public with any questions or comment? All right, Zach, thank you. Yes. Unfortunately, you do have to come up to the podium, because we have a vast home audience. Should you so choose, share with us your name and your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Mary Hastings, 2101, Taylor Rock Court. Were students encouraged to take this survey?
So on the advice of Mr. Holm, who helped us, who was our survey expert, we did limit the survey to folks 18 years and older. If we did want to include the younger demographic in a future survey, we could do that, but just knowing that would, that would obviously change the results.
I don't have an opinion one way or another right now. I just was curious if they were included or not, because an easy way, obviously, to get them to fill it out is to do it at school.
Oh, 100%. And that being said, you know, there was a question, are you 18 years of age or older, yes or no? It's entirely possible that folks who are not 18 years of age or older clicked yes and took the survey. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Thanks again. Appreciate it very much. And anyone, you can see all the results on our website at any point in time. All right, moving on to item number 13. Consideration of revisions to connection fees and development impact fees for accessory dwelling units. The recommended action is adopt the resolution as presented. Taking us through this will be Planning and Building Director Lynn Goldberg.
Thank you. You may recall, as I advised you last month, when we brought you a package of municipal amendments that were intended to address changes in state laws, to how we regulate accessory dwelling units. This is another piece of it. The state laws prevent us now from imposing connection fees and development impact fees on accessory dwelling units that are less than 750 square feet. And also, we cannot collect connection fees at all unless the accessory dwelling unit or ADU is constructed with a new single-family dwelling. So it's unlikely that we're going to be collecting connection fees either, once somebody figures out that they can do the single-family dwelling and then follow with the ADU. But, and I just wanted to point out in the staff report, that the impact on our budget, our various funds, will be more than $36,000 per dwelling unit. That's revenue we will not be receiving for our wastewater and water funds and our various impact fee categories, such as transportation, fire and police. We don't really have an option, though, whether we can charge these fees or not. So this is kind of going through the motions, and so we're recommending that you adopt a resolution revising the utility connection fees and the development impact fees for ADUs. And of course, this has already gone into effect, January 1st, as soon as we could bring it to you. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Council members, any questions? I am less interested in the impact to our revenue and more interested if this encourages housing, more housing to be built in Calistoga.
Yeah, the fees are always, you know, you get a gasp at the counter when we would share what the fees were. So we've already seen an uptick at the counter in terms of interest. I, you know, they brought in the newspapers or heard about the changes in state laws, which apply to every jurisdiction within the state. So hopefully, though, they'll follow through.
Great. Anyone in the public wishing to address this matter? All right, with that said, I'll entertain a motion as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on to item number 14. Periodic report on growth management system program allocations for the 2015 through 2019 program cycle and update on available water supply and wastewater treatment capacity. The recommended action is consider accepting the report. Taking us through this will be Director Goldberg.
Thank you. This is your periodic report on our implementation of the growth management system program. The report substantiates that the system has been administered in accordance with the municipal code. Basically, the program provides a means of allocating a certain amount of water every year, divided between residential and non-residential uses. And it's arranged around five-year cycles, and so the end of 2019 closed out the latest five-year cycle. And you'll see within the body of the report that we did not exceed the 1.35% growth rate. That's allowed by the resource management system and is also reflected in the general plan. And then in the attachments, you'll see the various allocations we gave out per year by address and divided between residential and non-residential. And certain, you'll see that many of the residential water connections are exempted from having to receive an allocation, and that there were some exemptions for non-residential water connections as well, such as Boys and Girls Club. However, I'd also just like to point out that the growth management system and the allocation process did not prevent or delay any type of development from having, from occurring over the last five years, including last year. So be happy to answer any questions. And also, there's also attachments showing how much of, you know, what our water availability is after making certain assumptions and reserving water for the two major resorts that are under construction, and this ditto with the wastewater treatment capacity. So I'd be happy to answer your questions via technical questions. You can ask them of Director of Public Works, please.
Thank you very much. Council members, any questions?
Lynn already answered my questions this afternoon, very capably, on these three items. So thank you for that. Thank you for this work.
Thank you. Anyone in the public wishing to address this matter? All right, with that said, we'll bring them back to the council for consideration of accepting the report as presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Councilmember Williams. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on, item number 15. Suspension of provisions that regulate residential growth within the city until January 1st, 2025, per Senate, State Senate Bill 330. The recommended action directs city staff to immediately discontinue administering the provisions of Chapter 19.02 Growth Management System. Taking us through this will be Director Goldberg.
So now you're familiar with the growth management system, which we can no longer administer for residential growth over the next five years. This SB 330 was deemed the Housing Crisis Act of 2019. It was signed into law, along with a number of other measures, intended to accelerate housing construction throughout California, particularly during the next five years. So this provides that we cannot implement any measures that would hinder the construction of residences or cap the number of housing units that can be approved or limit the population of the city. So again, not really any choice in this matter. I have a feeling it's going to be litigated by certain communities who are very much behind their growth management programs, but I haven't, I have yet to hear of one. Again, this was signed into law in October, and it runs for five years. So that could be another reason that people aren't going to bother to litigate it, because probably, by the way, by the time it worked its way through the courts, 2025 would have come and gone. So it's not really necessary for the city council to formally enact a suspension, because the municipal code requires that the provisions contained in Chapter 1902 apply to all development in the city unless otherwise exempt by this title or by state law. So basically, state law is preempting us from administering this chapter, so no need to do that. And again, I just wanted to reiterate that the growth management program, since it's been in effect since 2005, has not required the city to deny any residential permits in order to meet the growth rate goal, or I should say, cap, as was pointed out to me today. It's not a goal, it's a cap. That's supposed to be the most. But anyway, the practical effects of SB 330, therefore, are probably going to be negligible. We'll continue to keep track, just like we have, you know, keep records of how many dwelling units. We have to keep those anyway, for, we have to make state reports, and they're needed for other purposes. So we'll continue to track them over the next five years, but won't have to go through the allocation process. And we do charge $350 for each allocation, so save the constructor, the developer, some money without having to go through the process. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, and if I do recall, the council a few years back chose to bring forward any unrealized growth for a period of 10 years prior to that, which was about three, four years ago?
It was 2016, yes. It was 2016, yes.
So in 2016, the prior 10 years, we had not realized anywhere near the amount of growth that we were allotted or allowed, so we allowed that to come forward, and we still haven't even come close to-
Yeah, as it turns out, we didn't need that either.
Didn't need that either, okay. Councilmembers, any questions on this?
I understand that there is some legislation, SB 50, which is very concerning to me, and I don't know if we're going to have some kind of a discussion here at some future date to decide whether we're going to oppose this legislation, which would be, my guess, would be what we would want to do or support it. But it's pretty sweeping as it comes to housing and zoning regulations, as I understand it. It's being sponsored by Scott Wiener out of San Francisco, so one of the problems that you have in the state legislature is there's a supermajority in both houses and the governor. So it would be not hard to believe that some things that are maybe not in our best interest might go through the state legislature just because of the composition of the legislature right now.
And Gary, my understanding, from, I think, reading today's paper, you know, he's pushing this one-size-fits-all, which is problematic, but presently, the current form, I think, is to exempt cities with a population less than 50,000.
Yes.
And that's in deference to some intensive lobbying on the part of smaller cities.
Yeah, I looked at a website and clicked on, you know, put my address into it and everything, and it came up that Calistoga was not exempted, that it was in it, but that was some weeks ago, so apparently it's evolved.
It's a work in progress. So SB 50 is a housing bill attached to transportation, so if you are on a transportation, a major transportation line, it removes your ability as a local authority to reduce or limit the density of housing adjacent to transit. So we, two qualifications, we don't meet two of the qualifications. One, we're below 50,000, and two, we are not on a designated high-volume transit route.
But there was also a provision concerning overemployment in there.
But, excuse me, we're not open to the public on this. We're not open to the public at this moment, you'll have a chance in a second. So the SB 50 relevant to this discussion here-
It really isn't relative, other than it's more state legislation, which may require us to change the way we do business in a way we may not like.
Understood.
But if we've been exempted from it so far.
Okay, any other questions from the council? Anyone in the public wishing to address this matter? Should you so choose, please share with us your name and your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Dave Ross, live here in Calistoga, and pertaining to the point of order, SB 50 has nothing to do with the agenda item that we, that 15, it is inappropriate at this point in time to bring up a piece of legislation that may or may not move forward.
We weren't debating the piece of legislation, it was just a point of information if indeed this impacted.
Yes, I appreciate that, Mayor, but it had nothing to do with the immediate nature of Agenda Item 15.
It had to do as a point of information relative to the council member's concern if this impacted that, but thank you. All right, with that said, there's no action for us to be taken on this, other than you move it forward. Thank you, Director Goldberg. Moving on, item number 16, consideration of a resolution confirming the mayor's appointments to the Planning Commission and Active Transportation Advisory Council. Taking us through this item will be Acting Deputy City Clerk, or Deputy City Clerk, Melissa Velasquez. Melissa, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So we recently had some openings on the Planning Commission and the Active Transportation Advisory Committee. We had three members needed for the Planning Commission and four members for the Active Transportation Advisory Committee. So after reviews, after interviews, the following individuals were chosen for a two-year term on the Planning Commission, expiring December 31st, 2021. Douglas Allen, incumbent Alyssa McNair, incumbent Timothy Wilks. We have three individuals appointed to the Active Transportation Advisory-
Recommended for appointment.
Right, sorry, recommended for appointment.
Thank you.
Three individuals recommended for a two-year term on the Active Transportation Committee, expiring December 31st, 2021. Incumbent Dave Hagberg, incumbent Erica Pucey, and Spiro McCress, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know his name. We have one individual to a one-year term on the Active Transportation Advisory Committee, expiring December 31st, 2020, Ivan Miller.
Thank you very much. So I was very heartened by the fact that, for the first time in a long time, on both of these committees, we had far more applicants than we had positions. The fact that we have more public engagement is something we've always encouraged, and I personally have always encouraged. Anyone who reaches out to serve their community, I have a great affection for, and we thank you for that. If you weren't recommended for appointment this time around, there will be other positions that will be coming open. We just learned of some today. We could fill a whole committee at that point. But thank you to anyone who applied, anyone who is being recommended. The process is that I conducted the interviews of all of the applicants for both committees, and then I make a recommendation for consideration to the council, who approves the appointments from that point forward. These are members of our community who want to serve our community, and for that, we are very grateful for their interest. So with that said, any discussion on this before I open this to the public?
I just want to encourage and, you know, acknowledge the members of the community that they want to participate. As I say, community involvement is very important, that, so the decisions that they are taking here, they have a participation on the whole community. So thank you for your service and willing to participate.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Yes, I also want to thank all of the applicants for their interest in serving. I'm going to support your nomination, Mr. Mayor, your nominations. I do have some concern about continuing to reappoint incumbents term after term. I think it's important, as this measure, this resolution claims, that we utilize the untapped reservoir of talent, and the incumbents are very qualified and have served us well, and we have others also who are interested in serving, and so I think in the future I'll be particularly interested in broadening the number of people or expanding the number of people who serve. So I'm grateful for those who've applied, and also for those who have been serving, certainly. I have this vision of walking down Lincoln and seeing locals, passing locals, most of whom have served in the community on one way, in one way or another. And so that is, that's something that I would look forward to. You know, I don't expect us to be here eight years from now at this table, because the turnover, I think, is important and valuable, and what we lose in experience, we gain in new perspective. So, again, thanks for all who applied, and I personally interviewed almost all of them as well, and I'm impressed with their interest and capability, and I appreciate their service.
Thank you. Anyone in the public wishing to address this matter? All right, with that said, we'll entertain the motion as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much, motion carries. We will now adjourn to the next regularly scheduled meeting, which is going to be January 21st at 6:00 PM. Have a nice evening, happy new year again.